Read Apple, it is six thirty-one, so we'll get started. Turn my timer on. Ready. Um, there's somebody who's got a lot of background noise. If everybody could mute as best as possible, that would be great. So I'll call this October twentieth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. My usual public service reminder that these meetings are always open to the public. They're meetings of the Board of Selectmen to conduct their business of the board. If you'd like to offer comment, we have two opportunities on the agenda at the beginning and the end. And appreciate any comment at those times. Approval of minutes. I will make a motion to approve the October sixth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes. Thank you. Any corrections or anything? Got ruckus in the background there, Rufus? Uh-oh, he's looking over his glasses. Anybody have corrections or anything? All those in favor?
I.
Thanks. And we'll go to our first public comment on agenda items. Going to scan the room if I can find the. Any comments or? Questions? I don't see any hands up yet. Alrighty, we will keep forging ahead. Um, we have a couple of correspondence items in the folder. The first one we'll follow up on is from Cheryl Kinney. So she was following up on some previous correspondence about Upper Kent Hollow Road. So she thanked us for getting the Upper Kent Hollow and Anderson Road sign installed. So big thanks to Rick and his crew for that. She did have a number of questions about the Straits Road stop signs, speed enforcement, and road erosion. So Andrew will be doing speed enforcement in the area on Upper Kent Hollow and a couple other areas in the hollow over the next few weeks. It takes some time to get our, the your speed signs up and out while they're great. They require a different post and it's just a process, as is everything. We also need to get the sign connected and then have the DOT put that sign up on our dashboard so we can actually see the data. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that all wrapped up in the next week to ten days is my hope. Rick looked at the section that Cheryl was mentioning. And there's a, on one side, there is a retaining wall, which is sort of down below where the road is. He's, Rick has looked at that and he's going to be doing some patching when he's doing other patching in the area. And also adding some reflective delineators along the side of the road. There's just small little sort of snow markers there now, but he'll be adding the proper, like a, you know, this kind of reflector to better alert drivers of where the side of the road is. Installing a guard, a guide rail there would actually damage the road and would, I'm sorry, damage the retaining wall that's below and narrow the road further. So it's only eighteen feet across in that spot. So we're going to have an engineer come out and look at that section because it would require more significant work to widen the road and build the road back up. It may. So we're going to have, I think he's got some, an engineer in the area in the next month. So he'll have them also look at that area as well. He's waiting on call before you dig for the stop sign at the end of Straits Road. So when he hears back from them, he'll, he'll install that stop sign. So I think we covered everything.
And Cheryl and Jack know all about this? You've, you've relayed all this information to them?
No, because it, you know, it's, it's disparate, different pieces and parts, but I'll wrap it all up in an email.
Okay.
Needs to forward that email to me so I can get back to them in writing.
Okay.
And I wanted to cover everything on the meeting because Cheryl said she wasn't going to be able to be at the meeting tonight. So it's now recorded, so she wants to watch it after.
Okay, good.
And I just lost the display. There we go. And we have an email from Zan from this afternoon. Is Zan, there she is, she's on the call. Zan, do you want to?
Do you want to read my email?
Sure.
I don't have it in front of me, but.
Sure. Dear Selectmen, the results of the Swift House tax, sorry, Task Force's recent survey are in with significant participation and strongly favor the town retaining the building for civic use. With that in mind, the Swift House Task Force has a responsibility to look more closely at that option among others and is therefore working to try to determine what it would take to make required changes and other important improvements to the building that serve that need. I am therefore writing at the request of the Swift House Task Force to seek funds from the Selectmen's contingency budget or other available sources to inform our investigation. Specifically, the funds would be used by the Task Force in order to seek the advice of a qualified architect knowledgeable about Connecticut building codes and ADA requirements to advise the Task Force on how best to execute necessary alterations to Swift House to comply with those requirements and to make modest potential interior upgrades that would make the building more flexible and user-friendly for ongoing civic use. A clear preliminary architectural design study will be critical to determining estimated cost of execution so that the Task Force can present a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that will include a well-informed estimate of costs for BOS and taxpayer consideration. Without knowing what funds may be available for architectural consultation, we would like to request up to seven thousand dollars for a report and a preliminary master plan for community use of the Swift House. There is some urgency if we are to complete our final Swift House report to the Board of Selectmen in time for consideration during the coming budget season. So we respectfully ask that this request be taken up and acted upon at tonight's Selectmen's meeting. Sincerely, Zan Charity, Chair of Swift House Task Force.
Thank you for that reading.
Sure. My mouth is a little dry, so I apologize.
I would like to actually see the survey, the questions, and the numbers and the responses. I want to see that, that the particular data figures before I make any kind of determination.
Okay. I can, I can give you numbers on the different options that were offered and commented upon. The we we had over four hundred responses and of those the percentages for strongly, strongly support and support the keeping the Swift House for civic use was seventy-four point eight percent. Keep the house, keep it for municipal use was fifty-three point four. And sell the property was twenty-four point three. So those were the options that were offered.
The first one was keeping for civic.
For civic use as it has been in the past, but enhanced, hopefully. We have some plans in the works that would help make that happen. And there were many, many comments, which I went through and identified as either keeping the building for, as town property, turning it into apartments or selling it. And of those, seventy-nine comments were in favor of keeping the building as a town asset. Six were in favor of turning it into apartments and eighteen were in favor of selling. So I can send the whole survey and the comments to you for further perusal. But I'm hoping that we could address this need to bring in an architect to, so that we could, in the budget process, have some really much better numbers for what it would cost for of the various changes that need to be made, most especially ADA compliance. And if we do anything significant to the building, then we would also need to make sure that Connecticut codes are met.
So Sam, a little confused on the last three figures you gave us, seventy-nine, six, and eighteen.
Those are just an analysis of the comments, which were not obligatory.
In the comments.
In the comments. Voluntary. If people wanted to make a comment, they could. And those, those were how they stacked up in terms of the different options. I mean, some just said, you know, thanks for asking. I didn't count that at all. But if they had an opinion that they expressed
Right.
for one of the options, I recorded those.
So on your screen is the, I just sent the PDF of this, but also a link to this dashboard. So these are the various questions that were asked.
The initial questions were just to give us a sense of what people knew about Swift House. About, you know, its history, its condition, that we had already done significant work like replacing the roof and the chimneys and the foundation and getting the animals out and closing up any access. But then at the end of the survey, we asked, do you think the town of Kent has adequate public and private facilities for small and mid-sized meetings and events? And more people said they weren't sure. And the others were pretty evenly divided between yes and no. Should the town continue to support necessary maintenance and repairs of this historic structure, including ADA accessibility? And sixty-six percent said definitely yes. Fifteen percent said no. And eighteen percent said not sure, would like more information. So there, and in the comments, there were also a lot that said, you know, they'd like more information. What would it cost? And now that we know the sensibility of all those who took an interest in this, that they would like to see the town keep it for civic use. Our next step really is to try to nail down what that would mean in terms of required and important improvements and what it would mean certainly in terms of cost. So that's why we're asking for some funds to work with an architect to make sure that, I mean, we have some ideas of things that would be good to do that have been looked at by both the first and the second Swift House Task Force and agreed upon by our members. But in order to get some fairly accurate estimates of cost, we need to take into consideration, we need to see if our ideas are manageable in terms of the requirements of both ADA and Connecticut code. Also, see if an architect has some better ideas. And, and see, you know, what the modest changes that we're proposing would cost.
There's a lot of comments. I'm not going to scroll through all of them, but there, it's in your inboxes. And it's also on the town website under the Swift House Task Force. Um, I did ask Barbara about the contingency line. And she did get back to me, Zan. And she wrote contingency is budgeted for ten thousand dollars. And as you point out, this is a Board of Selectmen decision. At this time, I'm not aware of any liability that will encumber any of the ten thousand dollars that was budgeted for contingency. And then she gave the definition for contingency. Unforeseen costs or situations not included in the estimate of budgeted costs. An amount of money that is included to cover potential events that are not specifically accounted for in a budget estimate. The purpose is to compensate for the uncertainty inherent in cost and time estimates as well as unpredictable risk exposure. And what that all, in a, in a tidy nutshell means is that it, it, it's to be used for necessary unforeseen operating expenses. It's not, I hate to even use the very informal term, but slush fund or rainy day fund or, you know, there's a million other terms for it. That's not the intent of the contingency mine. So it would, in Barbara's opinion, it would not be a proper use of contingency. So we would have to find that money from somewhere else.
She doesn't think it's a proper use of contingency?
Correct.
Why is that? I mean, she was talking about cost and time estimates and timely. You know, if we're going to present, finalize our second report and get it to the Selectmen for review on a timely basis so that it can be considered within the next budget year. We need to go ahead now. I mean, we've already spent a lot of time and effort and we'd like to kind of wrap this up. But we can't wrap it up without providing information to the Board of Selectmen and the public about what would be needed to address this particular recommendation and what it would cost. Fairly accurate estimate of what it would cost. So, I mean, I think that's a very timely request.
I think, you know, the other side of that is that it, the Task Force could complete their report and just include that this is the process you would need, the town would need to contract with an architect and get a, I'm sorry. Close the email. Hang on one second.
I mean, that, that would take another year. I mean, we would like to be in a position to present a report that has information that can be acted upon or not. You know, it may be that a different decision is made or it may be that the estimates are not something that the town thinks that they can manage now or over time. But we need to be able to know that, to put that information into our report. Otherwise, it's just supposition and not enough information for decision making. Glenn, do you have anything to add since you were at last night's Swift Task Force meeting too? I mean, this is something that the, all members of the Task Force agreed was important and asked me to proceed and request funds to try to manage it.
Well, looking at funds, I've got the Swift House budget in front of me here. And for this year, it's a total of thirteen thousand, fifty dollars. Electric, heating, fuel, and water, that's all three thousand, eight hundred. Maintenance is four thousand, building supplies is five hundred, repairs is four thousand, custodian seven fifty. All of that's a total of nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for repairs, maintenance. I don't know what's been done thus far. I'm not quite sure what needs to be done for the rest of the year. I'm sure there will be repairs and maintenance that will come out of the budget for that. But it's, maybe, maybe it's possible that we can use some of the funding that's already there for this architect. Depending, depending on how much such a person would call.
Yeah, Joyce would have the current projection on the, the budget.
I don't have that budget with me, but at the urging of the subcommittee and being called fiscally irresponsible for not maintaining the building, I've used the maintenance and the repair lines. I believe I even went over a little bit, assuming that, you know, there might be some other funds in electric or whatever. But I don't have the exact numbers with me.
So yeah, it may be possible that there's nothing there, but, but if, if there is something, we could maybe work with that if there's no other funding in contingency or otherwise.
Now, there may be other aspects of the budget that are not being utilized because the building is closed and no activities are taking place there. So, you know, there aren't cleaning fees, it's not heated other than to keep the pipes from freezing. It's a, a lot of the line items are perhaps not necessary until the building reopens. But we, you know, our hope is that the building will reopen, but the more delays there are, the, the more unfortunate for, for use of the building. It's already been closed now, like two and a half years since the beginning of COVID. And once everything else opened up, you know, there was a decision that it couldn't be opened until we make it ADA accessible, even though groups that have used it in the past didn't require that. But I understand that's the decision of the Selectmen. But, you know, we, we don't even know what the options are to address the ADA requirements and how much the various options would cost until we can work with a licensed architect.
So we, and that sort of dovetails into, and I'm having an issue getting onto Google Drive right now. That dovetails into an item that's further down on the, on the agenda, which is that ADA implementation plan.
Oh, I thought there wasn't anything about Swift House on the agenda tonight, other than my request. Can we talk about that now then?
Um, we would need to, I believe, Joyce, would we need to make a motion to move that item up on the agenda?
Well, we didn't even make a motion to add these two correspondences.
Well, they were in the folder.
Right, but they weren't on the agenda.
Oh, I'm, okay, I I'm, I'm willing to stand behind that correspondence was on the agenda and that they don't, they didn't necessarily need to be itemized out.
But yes, you'd need to make a motion to move the item.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to move eight point nine up. How would you like this, Joyce? After correspondence or a new five and then it moves everything else down?
Just after correspondence, it's better if you don't change the numbering.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to move item eight point nine up to after correspondence. Thank you. All those in favor?
I.
I. Thanks. See if I can get back into Google Drive. Oh, you know what? I do have it. Hang on, I have it in Adobe. Ready. Let me get onto a screen share here. There we go. All right, can everybody see that? Okay, you want me to make it bigger?
Nope, that's good.
No, I'm sorry, this Excel has been misbehaving lately. It just cuts things like this off the bottom, but I think we can manage. So Joyce put this together, she got cost estimates from contractors. And with the, you know, what's a good word, the volatility of the construction market. Who's to say that these numbers are going to be good in six months or three months? We've all seen what's been happening out there, but these are the, the estimates that we got right now. So the way that the ADA organizes their checklist, which is what this, what the genesis of this is, is into four priority, prioritized categories. One is accessible approach and entrance, two is access to goods and services. Three is access to public restrooms. And I, and four is that sort of catch-all, everything else. So we organized and you can see there's some detail here. So here's the, the first priority. So this, this helps us understand and organize the priority of what we have to do first and then what we can do after we do the first thing and then what we can do after we do the second thing, et cetera. So this is all about the approach. This is about providing access to people into the building. So this is basically rolled up into the lack of a driveway, parking, parking spaces and access from parking spaces to the entrance of the building. The solution would be we would need a parking area, it would have to be sited, excavated, paved, lines painted, including at least one ADA van accessible space for a certain smaller size parking area. They wrap in the, the van accessible space and the one space that you're required to have into one. An ADA accessible ramp would need to have, you know, be sited, excavated, et cetera. And then the entrances would, would all have to be, would have to be designed. And whether it was a renovation or or some other installation.
It's, that would be one, we would only require one ADA accessible parking space and one entrance would have to be ADA accessible. Is that not correct? We don't have, we don't have to provide a full parking lot. We've never had one and never really needed one.
Right, but we would have to provide one ADA accessible, van accessible, at the very least, plus the driveway.
So part of my point in the request that the, the Task Force has asked is that it's very hard to get anything that's even remotely accurate without drawings and specifications. They don't have to be a full set of working drawings, but they have to cite things, they have to areas.
Apologies. Apologies.
So, you know, well, this is somewhat helpful in defining the various priorities. And I know from John Worthington that they do not all have to be done at once. Um, there has to be a plan over time. We, you know, two years ago in our first report to the selectmen, we had ADA accessible entrance and bathroom there too. But in the interim, um, you know, we've done a lot more work in terms of surveying the public, et cetera, and, and looking at other options. I, I would not, I, I mean, I, I've spent maybe twenty years doing design and construction management. I know that you don't get figures without having something accurate, otherwise the figures change and grow and maybe they're overestimated or underestimated because the contractor doesn't know enough about what's required to be able to give a reasonable number that they're willing to, to rest on. I think this is just a concept, not really a budget at all. And is it one contractor or is it three?
We worked with John and took his suggestions and recommendation on how to get figures. Joyce, do you want to jump in here for some detail?
Is, is Joyce on?
Yeah. Joyce, if you can hear us, um, just looking for some more detail on the, how you got to those figures. Oops, who did we lose? She's still with us. Joyce, can you hear us?
All right, I'm having technical difficulties tonight.
That's okay.
As I explained to the subcommittee last night when I presented this report, a little bit different, it was before your edits. Um, I spoke with, you know, one contractor primarily. Uh, this in no way represents a true dollar figure to write a check today. This, as Dan said, is a concept with a oh, a guess, a best guesstimate for the work that needs to be done so that the board of selectmen can say, are we willing to spend five hundred thousand dollars on this building before you spend ten thousand dollars on an architect and before you spend, you know, all these piecemeals. It, it's, it is a best guest. Nobody knows in an old house and, and many of you on this meeting have older homes. Anything is subject to change. You take one clad board off and then you have to replace the whole wall. You know, uh, the whole electrical system could have to be updated, maybe it doesn't. So, no, this is not meant to be write a check kind of figure. This is meant to be an overview for you to have an idea of what it's gonna cost.
I would like, you know, it would be nice if the task force had been included in the, um, in the process here, so that, uh, we have a sense of what the discussions were with a contractor and how much is flexible. I mean, we, we do have a plan that everyone has agreed to as a starting point. Um, that would perhaps have some advantages over some of the things that have been considered here like, um, uh, I know that there are issues with doorways and hallways. Um, and, uh, you know, we we'd like to see what an architect says about how best, how efficiently we can solve the needs and make the building more flexible and user friendly. Um, a, and I think that, you know, to, to put a figure to something with so many unknowns is not something, you know, if I were a member of the public, I wouldn't want to see something like this that's a guesstimate. I would want to see something not fully completed in terms of, you know, working drawings or, uh, but at least some layout sketches that identify the things that need to be changed and the things that would be considerable improvements to include in the process. That's what we're asking to, you know, just to have a modest amount of money to consult with an architect.
I think if you look at a guesstimate like this, um, the, any possible survey results may be very different than, oh, should we save the building? Should we do this? Should we do that? Um, I don't think we can really fully
Well, that, yeah, that's
act until we combine and, and merge a money estimate and provide that for town, um, referendum maybe down the road. So it, it seems to me that we would need to at least take that step of you know, and maybe that's the, the next thing, but is, is, you know, what, what needs to be done? I mean, you know, um, we don't need a parking area. We've never had a parking area. If we need an ADA parking spot, that would be that. I can't see setting spending seventy thousand dollars for one spot.
I can't either, and, and I think it would ruin the atmosphere of the building to have a lot of pavement and, and parking lines and one, one ADA spot is a necessity, but we don't want to turn the yard into a parking lot. So, I mean, these are the kind of things that we need to be able to thrash out and present so that the figures attached to the guesstimate are for something that everybody can see and understand and know what it's for.
So I apologize, I've lost both of my displays, but apparently you all can still see me.
It went out for a while, but
Yeah, say that again.
It went out for a while, but then the implementation plan came back.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the three of you, which is fine because, um, you know, I, I, I think the I don't think there's enough information for a guesstimate. As a design professional, I really, I've done this for many years.
I'm sorry about the technical difficulties. Joyce, you're still host, right? I think I need to log out and log back in.
Yes.
Okay, I will be right back. I apologize. Thanks, everybody. Sorry about that. Don't know what just happened. So, Rufus, where did we leave off?
So I, I think that, you know, we've asked the committee to come up with input as to building usage. And from those figures, it seems that the majority want to keep the building for use, um, but before we go and really know that for a fact, we have to be able to put some sort of a, a plan together that will um, delineate a cost figure. So you, you do need a professional to come in and help with that. Because we can't go to the town and say we're keeping the building and then find out that the cost is, is outrageously expensive and they don't want, want to spend the money. So it, you know, we do need to take that step. So I think it behooves us to find some money to talk to an architect. Um, and, you know, contingency may be a possible use of, uh, or source, but uh, I, you know, budgets are not set in stone. They can be, be utilized as, as it goes. So, you know, right now, um, in order to keep this moving towards some sort of a resolution, I think we do have to move on toward the, you know, getting, um, architectural implementation, some sort of a plan to go on. I, I don't see why we would want to delay that. Because the town should be able to vote somewhere in the near future on, okay, are we really going to want to keep the, knowing now how much it will cost? So I, I think we need to keep moving forward.
And that implementation plan isn't, um,
No, it isn't anywhere near.
Hang on, hang on, Zan, I was, I was asking Rufus.
Well, I think, you know, they want to, to take the step to get architectural guidance. As far as Zan, is that correct that you're looking to
Yes, we do.
Try to, um, I mean, you look at that im- implementation plan, I mean, I, there are things in there that I'm not sure are fully necessarily needed, uh, depending on, on what
Nor are they nor are they accurately explained because the contractor has to look at at least a reasonable drawing and some specifications to know what they're bidding on. They can't bid on a verbal idea or a walk around or something that, you know, they can't see and take into consideration. Um, so I, I, I think we need to we, as Rufus said, we can't take this to the public until we have a real sense of what it will cost, which would include not just ADA but some reasonable improvements that will make the building more useful and flexible. Um, not outrageous things, but it's clear, for example, that we need an improved kitchen facility. And the, the traffic flow is not what it used to be. There was a wall that was closed up that if we opened it up again, that would make it much easier for handicapped people to get around in a wheelchair. And maybe then it wouldn't be necessary to change other doorways if there was an alternate way to get into a room, for example. But we need to be able to put some thought into this, work with a professional, have, you know, a modest opportunity to look at the absolute needs of ADA and the the needs for the building to be a building that people really want to come into and use.
There, so I, I do have to push back a little bit. I don't disagree with where we're going, but there keeps being this sort of, um, implied chink in the armor with the ADA compliance. We went through the right process as a municipality in a municipal building with a, an ADA qualified ADA, um, professional. With, we didn't pull this out of our hats, we didn't we went by the federal checklist that we are required to go through and, and that's what this was based on. So there, hang on, there keeps being this sort of tossing out there of, um, you know, well, if we have to comply with ADA, we have to comply with Title II of ADA.
No one questioned that.
Okay, but there have been a lot of questions of how, in the weeds of are, whether or not we have to be ADA compliant, whether or not we could do this or that. We need to just have the baseline where we, we have to be in compliance with, with ADA. And, and I, I, I wanted to
Nobody
There has been.
No one is questioning that. Initially, there was a question about whether a building, if a building is owned by a municipality but not used as as town offices or for town use, then it was a question of whether there are two, two levels of ADA compliance.
Yes, and we went around and around and spent a lot of money with council to confirm that.
And so question was answered a very long time ago. We're not questioning that at all, Jean. We know what needs to be done, but there are different ways of arriving at solutions for some of these things. So, for example, seventy thousand dollars for a whole parking lot is not something that we need to do at all. We just need to provide one handicap parking place.
No, we have to provide a parking place that is compliant, which means we can't just put up a sign in the dirt that's over there now. That's not how it works. It would have to be paved and
and has that, to have a pathway to the building. You have to be able to open the doors to the, uh, the van. I'm aware of those requirements, but that isn't the seventy thousand dollar parking lot. Um, but I think we're getting in the weeds here a little bit.
Yes, so I'd like to go back up in the helicopter and ask the board what, um, where are we gonna find this funding? Um, do we go to the Board of Finance? Um, what's headed?
Could I make a pitch for the contingency if those funds haven't been utilized? You have asked the subcommittee of the selectmen to address these issues. We've been working on it for a long time. Um, we'd like to complete our assignment. We'd like a building that the town owns that's been close to the public and in no use whatsoever for almost three years to have a future and be reopened. in no use whatsoever for almost three years to have a future and be reopened. Whether it's as a municipal civic for civic use, or whether if the cost is too great and the public can't accept the, the cost or can't be budgeted, then we need to move on to the next thing. I think it's the perfect example of something that, I mean, we didn't request an architect before we, the survey results showed that that's what the people would like to see. And so now it's, it's, is the time for us to get that done. To wait another year in another budget season just to be able to do the next step of what you've asked us to do, I think is it's, you know, it's a unforeseen contingency that it deals with time and costs. And if the funds are available in contingency, you know, I remember going to Bruce Adams for contingency to to get a, what do you call it, a time box for the 350th anniversary of the town. It wasn't a terribly big number, but it came out of the contingency because that's when it came up and the funds were available and they were, were paid for. I, I think this would be an important use of contingency funds so that we can finish our job.
So I'd like to talk to the board now about this topic. Where, where do we want to head with this? Do you want me to have Barbara come to the next meeting? Do you want, I can forward you her email?
Yeah, I just, I just want to read, you know, I'll just read that top line there in this plan. The ADA checklist addressing all solution, enable the Board of Selectmen to move forward with the design. And next fiscal, one-time request and operating four thousand five hundred. I would, I would like, I'm hearing Zan, I would like to see if we could find monies for this fiscal, if it's possible. Maybe, maybe there's something left in the Swift House budget. Maybe it's half, maybe it's two thousand and we can split with the contingency. Maybe we can split with something else, but I'd like to, I'd like to look at the possibility of finding the monies for an architect this fiscal if we can. If we can't, we can't. But if it's four thousand five hundred, I think perhaps we can, we can maybe do something to help the committee.
I think I could get someone to help us for four thousand five hundred, you know, I I will certainly work on that.
That Glenn is already in the budget?
What's that?
Four thousand five hundred, or that's what we would have to find.
That's here.
Yeah. So it says a one-time request and operating.
Right here.
Right there. So, you know, I, I, I don't think we know what we've spent so far in Swift this year. I'd like to maybe know, and maybe we're over, maybe we can, maybe there's nothing that's possible. But, but let's look into that. I mean, let's look at what's left, if anything. Let's talk to Barbara again, and let's see if we can do something now, because if we don't, this, this subcommittee is going to meet until, what, July? And, you know, are we going to wait for next fiscal?
Yeah.
I don't know. So, you know, I mean, I like the committee, I like being on it, but I would also like for it to complete its job in somewhat of a timely manner. And when we first got this going, we did say about six months, and it has been six months. So I don't know if another six months is what we want, is what we have in mind.
Some of that six month, month period, I will be away.
Yeah.
Is it possible for you to agree on the concept and see if you can confirm that the funds are available?
I think we need to get a year-to-date from Barbara on the
Yep.
That.
We should have, just to interrupt a little bit here, Jean, when I looked last night, none of this stuff was even vaguely on as in our pamphlet. You know, Glenn and I both asked for at least forty-eight hours of, so we can look at figures. The Treasurers' report came in sometime today. I don't know when. I got home from working at six fifteen. And we should, we should have at each meeting, we should have a treasures report that shows year-to-date. You know, so that if something comes up, we can look and see if there are funds available. So without that, I can't really vote on anything tonight. I do believe that we should, the concept is something I agree with, but I don't have the figures. I don't have, I don't. I need that information ahead of time to be able to make an educated decision, and that we have not been given.
Well, Barbara hasn't historically provided in her treasures report a, you know, a full P and L for every department.
Well, if, if, if something comes up, which is asking for funds, we should have it. And so, you know, this is not certainly forty-eight hours in advance, so it's, it's very difficult to try to say, oh, yeah, we can do that. I'd like to say we could do that, and let's look at funds on in these lines, or this department is, is under budgeted and why, and you know, but in general, it doesn't really look like actual, the, what we do have today, you know, it looks like we're overspending already in most areas, but that we don't know for sure. So, you know, when something like this comes up, we should be able to see.
Okay, we also didn't get the request until today.
I'm sorry about
Sometimes timing is right. Sometimes we, everybody's super, super busy.
We schedule a meeting until
Throwing shade at anybody's hand at all. I'm right in, everybody's very, very busy. But I also understand what you're saying, Rufus.
So.
So we'll get more information from Barbara on where that, those lines are, year-to-date.
So is it your collective opinion that contingency is out of the question for this? I mean, I would personally think it would, would be appropriate. This is important work to get done for the town. And if that's the case, could it be made available for this use? Isn't it up to the selectmen?
It's a poor decision, but we also have to, you know, the reason why I asked the town treasurer is because she's the fiscal.
Well, I, I am
Head of the town.
I think contingency can be used for what we determine it to be used for. And it depends on the health of the entire budget. So without seeing that, I, I can't say for sure, but, you know, I'm not ruling out that we couldn't use contingency.
So let's, we'll keep this on the agenda. We'll talk to Barbara. We'll get some information out to the board so that we have it for the next meeting.
Their next meeting is not until November third, is it?
Yeah.
So in the meantime, you know, maybe I'll try to see if there's an available architect who could work with us and what the what the estimate would be for that. I mean, I'll clearly see if we can get some favors done in terms of cost.
So
I, I mean, we were hoping to finish our report and present it to you by the, the end of November, but this will delay things.
I have to caution you with your words of, with your use of the word favor. As a municipality, we have to
A favorable rate.
Above board, it has to be done in a transparent way.
No, I mean, maybe I should say a favorable rate because there's always a sliding scale of rates.
Right, but we have to go through a proper procedure in order to hire an architect. That would be for the Board of Selectmen to do.
Right.
Okay. All right, we're going to continue.
Did you send us a document of the survey that was done?
Yeah.
Now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then PDF and I also sent the link to the dashboard, and it's also on the website, on the
Thank you very much for your consideration, and I hope we can move forward on this without much delay.
And thanks, Zan, for your time and your passion. Very much appreciate it.
Okay, want to get this project moving forward.
Understood. So moving on to number five, tax refunds. We have two refunds totaling forty-two dollars and sixty-two cents, and I will entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Thank you. I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The treasures report is attached. If you have questions, just reach out to Barbara. I don't think she's on the meeting. No. So we'll keep moving forward. Seven point one, I believe, yes. Approval of Highway Crew Leader Job Description. So this was a late add. We were, Rick, Joyce and I were going back and forth last night and this morning. But what you'll see, and I will put it on the screen share. So this goes back to the last budget season, springtime, sorry. There we go. We approved in the budget to add a DPW crew leader where that would be an additional two dollars. That would be basically a an internal promotion. And so what you're seeing on your screen is, in the yellow, is what has changed. So we took the CDL maintainer job description and layered on a couple of other components to create this crew leader. And we had to work with the union, and the union has had a lot of activity going on in the last couple of months. So we were able in the last, when did we get that, Joyce, last week, an MOU from them? So that we could add this position without opening up that contract again. So in addition to the CDL maintainer duties, which you see not highlighted here, is the, this new title. They would be supervising the highway maintainers. So we have non-CDL and CDL highway maintainers. And the only thing that changes is this yellow provides day-to-day management supervisions of tasks and duties of highway maintainers. And then on the second page, under the minimum qualifications, they need to be a current Town of Kent CDL maintainer. So again, this
So there's just going to be one. There's not they is one ad infinitum, but not more than one.
Correct. And again, we had to go to the union, get approval, and enter into a, you know, simple MOU in order to not open up the contract again, which they absolutely agreed to. So this is just sort of closing that loop. It will be again, two dollar increase, hourly increase.
I would make a motion to accept the Town of Kent Job Classification for the Department of Public Works Crew Leader as presented.
Second.
Thank you, and thank you. So all those, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks. So I will take out the highlighted portions, and then we'll get that moving along. Under Old Business, twenty twenty-three Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting Schedule. So when we talked about this at the last meeting, we talked about some of the pinch points with the Thursday meetings, time of day, the day of the week, that's a a non-Kent day for the treasurer. So if it were on a Tuesday, somewhere between Tuesday or Wednesday, somewhere between like two and, and six, or on a Friday, Barbara would be able to be here for those meetings. She has, obviously, she's also the Finance Director in Cornwall, so she has her hours there, plus the meetings there. So there's a lot of, you know, she's got a heavy schedule to work out. You know, we went with these for a couple of reasons. One was to try to give that afternoon and then evening options to the public to attend. Just trying to sort of give, you know, the pros and cons of why we're where we are right now.
So Wednesday would work for everybody?
I can make anything work as long as I know ahead of time. But I think I still think for that we should have one meeting at least early, like we've done, four thirty or whatever, and for alternate that, maybe one later, if, but.
So we do have a couple of conflicts on the Wednesday days. Board of Finance is Wednesdays and Conservation Commission is Wednesdays, and I think there's another one on Wednesdays.
I couldn't do the third Wednesday of the month. So the third, third Wednesdays, I couldn't. If one of those commissions meets then, we could avoid that. So we could do the second Wednesday and the fourth Wednesday of the month. Unless that gets in the way of them.
Um, Conservation is the second Wednesday at seven. And Board of Finance is the third Wednesday at six.
I couldn't do that one.
Okay. So we have the, their options are the first and the fourth.
That's not, doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
And then you're meeting back to back.
Right. We could do one of those Wednesdays, either the first or the fourth, and then
A Tuesday, maybe.
Tuesday or Wednesday, Thursday or something. So let's
Basically, Glenn, with your school schedule.
Tuesdays is no good for me, Tuesdays. I, I could do Mondays if that's an option.
Yeah, Mondays are terrible for me. And there's a lot of, there's other meetings, park and rec.
Okay.
What about if we did the first first Wednesday and third Thursday?
Yeah, that would work for me.
Because we're already slotted into the third Thursday right now, and we could do the Wednesday four and the Thursday, six thirty, so we're keeping the same time. And Joyce, chime in here. And so the other And so the other, another pinch point though is, these are all out of normal working hours for Joyce. Who's our minute taker? Although we are recording the meetings, but it is great to have her here. Since the meetings are recorded, she can go back, but obviously it's, it's, she's a, an asset to these meetings.
Like, so you're looking to see if we can do both at four o'clock to make it easier for Joyce?
Could we do the Wednesday meeting at three? Joyce.
Do you really think you need two regular meetings a month? I, I don't have it right here, but I had reviewed the past year's agendas. Statistically, you only have two to three new items. The majority of your items that stay on your agendas are old business. To me, it makes more sense to have one regular meeting a month, have a couple special meetings. You know, for the next consecutive few months to get the old business taken care of. And then I really don't think you'd need two meetings a month. I mean, if you look at your meeting schedule, your, your agendas, you don't get that much new business that it really requires two meaning, two regular meetings a month, but. That's just my observation.
She makes a valid point.
No, if we have the information ahead of time, we should be able to shorten our discussions and. Be, you know, it's preparation.
And I do have to say that has been um, a challenge for me with the two meetings a month. Is we get through the meeting and then really the, you know. The following Monday, it's one week until the next meeting. So the, and there's a lot going on. I mean, a lot going on um, and has been, so. I'm just looking at the calendar here.
I, I certainly don't mind one meeting a month that would make things easier for me in many ways, but I do not want to have a four hour meeting though. I mean, um, you know, we hit the, we hit the three hour mark and you know. It's crazy. Um, so.
Let's think of.
Couldn't even be two hours.
I mean, if we. Gotta be short, shorter.
So let's talk about the, let's go under the framework of one meeting a month. Um, the, the next. Part of the discussion is um. Nighttime meetings versus daytime meetings. We have an employee who. You know, works a lot of hours and a nighttime meeting would be in, you know, a nighttime meeting.
That's fine. If we, if, if we went to one regular meeting a month, um, I would not mind. Four o'clock even, well, three o'clock's really cutting it. I could do three thirty. Um, but. I, I could do, I could do a Thursday would be easier for me. Um.
But Barbara's not here on Thursday.
If we had a treasures report ahead of time.
Right, we usually do. We usually do. It's only been, I think, maybe this month and last month that we didn't. And she remembers she's in audit season. So. There's.
You know, it's. As, as long as we have the information, it's the three of us.
So. So doing it on a. A Thursday, we, if we needed additional financial information, that would cause it could to go to another thirty days or to a special meeting.
So Barbara can, she can do Wednesdays easily, okay?
She's here, one thirty-ish to.
If you know an issue Jean is coming up that involves financial information. Get it from Barbara ahead of time. We don't need Barbara at the meeting to tell us. What information is either in, in the treasures report year to date or not? We simply can look there. Or you get it from her. Ahead of time. So that we have.
And she, she did do that today. I mean, I emailed her on a Cornwall day and. I was not expecting to hear back from her because I do try to respect that. Um, but she did get back. So, you know.
Well, I'm saying that like, you know, you know that our meeting is tonight. The treasures report. For the last day she was in Kent this week.
Right, and she had it, I believe, she had just gotten it to the Board of Finance last night for their meeting. And so was, I think it was in the folder today at some point.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, I'd like it a little bit ahead of the day of the meeting, but still. You know, she could have done it. But we don't need Barbara at the meeting. That's a conversations you have with her to prepare for the meeting.
Sure.
So that's your preparation coming in, and then we make our decisions. So you know, when we set our meeting date, it's our availability, the three of us and Joyce, who is the. One who has to also. Take minutes.
So what do we, do we want to go back to Thursday? I, I just wanna make a decision here.
I, I, I mean, to get everyone.
Once a month is fine with, with the specials. I think that's a good idea.
Just to get everyone here, I'm okay with a Wednesday. I can do a Wednesday, but I can't go earlier than four though. I can do, I can do one Wednesday a month. I could start at four. Just not the third Wednesday of the month.
So when are you proposing to do this? Starting in January or?
Yeah, we need to get this to the town clerk. Prior.
I know when, Wednesdays are very tough for me during September and October. But.
A year from now.
Assuming I can still run.
The other piece is the, the four o'clock doesn't, um, doesn't really help Joyce. Her day ends at four o'clock. Um, she lives out of town, so. Generally what she does is she wraps up her day. Um, and then make sure, depending on which meeting, she may stay here. Which puts her, you know, home late or she'll dash home and be at home. Um, you know, that, that digs into her.
Well, if, if, um, if she, if she leaves at four and if we're still aiming for a two-hour meeting, cross fingers. Um, we'd have to start at two. I can't do that. Uh, I, no, no chance.
I appreciate, excuse me, I appreciate you thinking of me. If it's one meeting a month at four o'clock, we can work around that. I, I really. It's not an issue.
Okay.
We either do that or we start at four thirty and Joyce can have the option then to go home. And run it from once she's there. Whatever. That gives some people who may wanna. You know, sign in with us, uh, an extra half hour to get home from work. But that also eliminates the six thirty start, which can be very. Late.
So Joyce, you'd be okay with once a month and in so, some kind of afternoon situation here?
It's fine. Yes. So we could do the um. That first Wednesday. At four o'clock.
Or the third Thursday at four o'clock.
The third Thursday.
Yeah, whichever is easier.
Let's, why don't we go with Wednesday and then we have the bonus of if we need Barbara here for something, she'll be here anyway.
I will be at either one, so. Up to you guys.
I'll make a motion to set our twenty twenty-three meeting schedule for the first Wednesday. Of every month at four PM.
The fir, the first or the second? We're gonna do the first?
First. Because the second is con, conservation is at seven.
Before you second that, just keeping in mind, Barbara, I know in the past Barbara has said to do a, a report at the beginning of the month. She doesn't necessarily have all the information. So as, when Rufus talks about year to date, that sort of thing. But, but that's something, but I, I don't want to speak for Barbara, but I think that's been a conversation in the past.
Yeah, and that absolutely makes sense. So what about the fourth Wednesday? There's, there's a region one ABC committee meeting that night. But nothing else.
Not my.
I could do the fourth Wednesday.
Fourth Wednesday, it's fine.
Okay. Are you ready for me to make a motion?
Did you rescind the other one or no one seconded?
Yeah, we didn't get a second on it.
Just, just to throw this out before you do that motion, that leaves a huge chunk of time between our last meeting in December and the first regular in January, so we made. Special meeting.
Yeah, we would do a special meeting, I'm sure.
Okay.
Alrighty, I will make that motion to set our twenty twenty-three meeting schedule for the fourth. Wednesday of each month at four PM. It's like a race, alrighty. Any other pinch points, Joyce?
Not that come to mind.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you for the conversation, alrighty. Onto eight point two, Assistant Land Use Director. I'm sorry, that should say Assistant Land Use Administrator Job Description. So I'll go back on screen share. And Ty is here. I mean, the deck chairs. Oh, can you, um?
So this is exactly what. This is. What we saw last week or two weeks ago?
There are two, there were two in the folder. Let me just go to the folder quick. Sorry. There were two in the folder, um. This is the correct current one. That Ty and I worked on.
Correct. The other one in the folder is what Glenn asked for, which was the original one. That, why that was put in there.
Yeah, thanks. So, um. Ty, trying to get back to. Seeing all the participants, so I can move around the deck chairs here. For some reason, when I'm on screen share, I can't view the participants. So Ty and I made a couple of adjustments. There were some redundancies in the purpose in the top there that we just. Moved down or they already existed down in the other sections. Um, we did. Add on the second page. In the um. Minimum qualifications, there was here minimum two years la, uh, experience in land use or commensurate. Training or something like that. We moved that down here for substitutions. Allowed. And then.
What is that commensurate training, IE?
Yeah, example. So substitution would be if the um, person only has. One year experience in a land use office, but they um, took the UConn clear. Um, training or they're CASIO certified. They could substitute that for one year of that. Two, minimum two-year experience. And then under, we originally. Under the minimum qualifications was that Connecticut Certified Zoning Official, and we moved that down to Preferred Qualifications. Was there anything? Did I miss anything, Ty?
No, I think you pretty, pretty much summed it up. It's really not much of a change. We just kinda clarified, you know. What, what would be an example of, you know, the kind of education that we'd be looking for. Um, in lieu of experience. Anybody who, who is familiar with, um, you know, land use would recognize like the U, UConn Clear. This or any kind of CASIO training as, you know, the appropriate training for that kind of position.
Other than the IE, which I shudder at. This, but this is not, this is not what Glenn asked to see.
No, the other one is.
The other one is.
Just not V, I'm just not showing it at the moment.
Yeah, I can see the, I, I got the older one on my screen. I got the.
I only have two, two displays.
Okay, that's clear to me.
I don't know what that little thing is. I'll have to clean that up. So, um.
So Glenn, are you satisfied with having seen and looked at the old one or do you have any?
I've got nothing else. I'm satisfied. That's all I wanted to see.
So can I make a motion to accept the?
And you know what? I apologize. So the, I was looking at the footer on this and it's, the footer is a little bit different, so I just wanna. Make sure that everyone is seeing the one, the correct one. Hang on one second. Alright. So this has our. Board of Selectmen approval date, the. OE or EOE. Put her at the bottom. Again, we moved some of those things down below. It's all exactly the same except basically the footer. Sorry about that. Oh, and.
There's a page three though.
Yeah, there was, I just could not get that. Um, I was trying to fudge the margins, could not get it to. To pop up to two pages.
So if you're, if we're, if you can't get it into two, could we change IE to? Either such as or for example?
Yeah, I can change it to for example. For sure.
So I would make a motion that we approve with that change. Um, the.
Assistant land.
Assistant uh, land use administrator job description as presented.
Thank you. I'll second that. So just to round out the discussion, we're changing this from a clerk position to an assistant position and that range. For the hourly rate.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or Ty, anything else to jump in here on?
No, no, that's. No, no, that's enough.
Thanks, sorry I couldn't move the deck chairs around. All those in favor? Great. So Ty, you can work with Joyce to get everything in motion, and I'll get this to you tonight so that you have the final version and go from there.
Great, appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Ty.
Thanks, Ty. Alrighty. Moving right along. Uh, B O E request for School Resource Officer slash Town Meeting Questions. Um, so we had a, a few of us in the office had a, in the building had a um follow-up conference call with Town Council regarding the wording of the motions made by the B O E, B O F and B O S. And what came out of that call was Town Council is gonna be sending us um suggested motions so that all of the motions and all of the different boards are um in line, so there's no gray area, no questions that are outstanding. Um, so just to make sure, because these are, this is, these are important topic that we're talking about, so I should have that from him hopefully tomorrow, and so then I'll send out an email to the boards with the suggested language for them to make at their next meeting. Also, the, so the the S R O topic obviously is a complex one. And in reading the statute, um, there's a section or a chapter about the referendums and it allows for um the Board of Selectmen. And I'm just reading this right out of the statute to allow for um the the legislative body or the Board of Selectmen um to authorize the prep- the preparation, printing and dissemination of concise explanatory texts or other printed materials with respect to local proposals or questions approved for submission to the electors of a municipality at a referendum. Um, so it's very prescribed what we can provide, what we can't provide, it can't the explanatory text cannot um attempt to influence the voters, it has to just be um basic, simple information um.
Needs to be factual.
Right, so. The, um, in order to move forward with this preparation, if the board is in favor of doing so, we need to um, make a motion, which I have written, um, if that's um the flavor of um the board. Which I would recommend that we, um, and so it has to um, the town clerk would be involved, the registrar of voters, the town attorney has to um approve that language, so it would, you know, we need to get moving on that. So um, I will make a motion that pursuant to Chapter one fifty-two of the Connecticut General Statute, Board of Selectmen authorize the preparation, printing and dissemination of concise explanatory texts or other printed material with respect to the two referendum questions.
Second.
Why are we making a motion if it's already there?
Because the pursuant, the statute says that the, the legislative body has to authorize it.
But we haven't seen what it is. We, we need to see what we're authorizing.
We're just authorizing the preparation, printing and dissemination of concise explanatory text that in another section says that the town attorney has to, um, I forget what the exact wording is.
We can authorize the preparation, but until we actually see what they've prepared, we can't really authorize the printing.
Right, but we have to authorize the, the town to be able to go and do this, work with the attorney, work with the town clerk to get this language um, written, the, and then the um explanatory text shall be subject to the approval of the municipal attorney. So the.
Was that last sentence? So we don't even control what the final thing is?
So in this section, it's titled Local Questions and Proposals, Preparation, Printing and Dissemination of Explanatory Texts and Other Materials. Um, Use of Community Notification Systems, Expenditure of State and Municipal Funds to Influence Vote, Prohibited, Exception, Civil Penalties, Sumaries of Arguments for Against Local Questions. So that first um piece says, except as provided in subdivision two of the subsection, any municipality may by vote of its legislative body authorize the preparation, printing and dissemination of concise explanatory texts or other printed material with respect to local proposals or questions approved for submission to the electors of a municipality at a referendum. For purposes of this section in a municipality that has a town meeting as its legislative body, the Board of Selectmen shall be deemed the legislative body of such municipality. Do you want me to keep?
No, I mean, I, I still think that just, you know, you but we need to see what we're approving.
Right, so the next section reads at, on each such explanatory text shall be prepared by the municipal clerk and shall specify the intent and purpose of each such proposal or question. Such explanatory text shall not advocate either for either the approval or disapproval of the proposal or question. The municipal clerk shall cause such question or proposal and such explanatory text to be printed in sufficient supply for public dissemination and shall also provide for the printing of such explanations of proposals or questions on posters of a size to be determined by said clerk. At least three such posters shall be posted at each polling place at which electors will be voting on such propos- proposals or questions. Any posters printed in excess of the number required by this section to be posted may be displayed by said clerk at the clerk's discretion at locations which are frequented by the public. The explanatory text shall also be furnished to each absentee ballot applicant pursuant to subsection D of Section nine dash one forty, each sec- each such explanatory text shall be subject to the approval of the municipal attorney.
I still think that whatever the municipal clerk does has to be done. And we see that before we can vote to approve, approve or print. I mean, you know, you're asking us to, to make a motion to approve and print something that we're not even seeing.
The, the town attorney has to um approve it.
So this is for the referendum on December fifteenth, this is.
Yes.
The set. Um, the, the, the town, we've, we've had a referendum before, ha- have we had to do this in the past? Or is it something new?
Well, so for instance, there was a resolution for the funding for the um the, the, actually, the best example is um on Election Day. There is a proposed, sorry, a proposed amendment to the Constitution. And on the, the state website is this, which is the explanatory text. Which meets that statutory requirement. So in the order of the statute, A is the legislative body has to authorize explanatory text to be written, printed and disseminated, then B, which is the next section, once it's authorized, then the clerk and the attorney draft that, that language, and then it's printed and goes about the other details in that statute that I read.
So, so every time the town of Kent has a referendum, we, we, we approach town attorney to work with the town clerk to get the language correct.
Well, we don't have to, um, I believe it says may. Hmm, yeah, so except as provided in subdivision due of this, two of this subsection, any municipality may
May.
authorize the preparation and printing of explanatory text. If you have a simple.
Yeah, okay, alright.
You know, should we? Should we make the, should we paint the sidewalks red? Um, that likely would not need explanatory text, something that's more complex or complicated may call for, and that's why there's the may in the statute.
Okay, so we don't have to do this with each, you know, we don't have referendum often, but, but if, but if we did this again, if it's a, if it's a simple issue, and this one maybe, maybe this one is not so simple, maybe this is something that we want to do.
Right.
I got it. Okay, thank you.
That's why there's the may.
Yeah, got you. So if we, if we do this, uh, this is not going to impinge anything on the December second uh, town meeting and the fifteenth referendum, so.
No, it's actually to provide the public with background information, so the, the sections in this um, explanatory text, the ballot question. Right, so there's the ballot question, shall the Constitution of the state be amended to permit the General Assembly to provide early voting? That is the exact question that we all, when we go to vote, we all will see on the ballot. The next section is content and purpose of the proposed amendment, so it could likely say something like content and purpose of the proposed question, and I not up to me, but I would think that we would have this for one question and then another explanatory text for the second question. Um, so that's, so content and purpose, um, further explanation. Um, the text, which is, is basically the question, so we might not need that. Um, and the process, so that's in a one-pager. Joyce, did did I make the motion and did we get to a second?
Yes, Glenn did second it.
I seconded it.
Thanks, it's getting a little late for my brain.
But I'm sorry, since I didn't write your whole motion, did it say S R O? Because you just referenced that you will do this for both the S R O and the E M S.
Yeah, I just put that we would do both questions in the um.
That, but I don't think, was that in your motion?
Yeah, for the two referendum, two referendum questions. Do you want me to read the motion again?
No, I'll, I'll get it off the recording.
Yeah, and I, yeah, it was less for you, more, more for Rufus and Glenn. So I took it largely from the statute. Motion was pursuant to Chapter one fifty-two of the Connecticut General Statutes, Board of Selectmen authorized the preparation, printing and dissemination of concise explanatory texts or other printed material with respect to the two referendum questions.
So when do these have to be ready by the town, before the town meeting?
Um.
Cause you, you would think that these have to be ready at the town meeting.
Hmm.
Or be- even before, when can people start voting during the referendum?
Yeah, probably would be triggered by the absentee ballot applications when those are, when those would go out.
Go out with them.
Right.
So what, when is that deadline?
I don't know how those um date start and ends work.
I mean, that's, that's important that we make that so that they're ready.
Yeah, and Darlene is, she's definitely the expert on all those trigger dates and deadlines.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is to give the public um more just factual information.
Okay.
Alright.
Already, all those in favor?
I.
I. Thank you. Eight point four. Uh, COVID nineteen pandemic update, um D P H reached out based on the usage data of the test site. They asked to reduce the test site hours to Tuesdays only, they added an hour. So the site is now open um, starting this past Tuesday. Uh, Tuesdays only from two to six, and it's on the website and we sent out a um a last email about it. There is a lot of concern, I'm sure everybody's been hearing in the media and the medical community about all these new strains that are wandering around and really the, the big piece is that layering of the potentially bad flu season. Um, we've been going through a lot of home kits, every day people are coming in asking for home kits. So we mean, need to um make a decision on if we're gonna invest in more home kits. Um, the, I believe the um pharmacy is not testing right now, so it would it would reduce the availability of um tests for people if we ran out of home kits, so we can look into costs for getting a, another um case of those, see what the pricing is. Um, E V charging station update, we had a site visit last week with a company to um move forward with quotes for replacing the one out here at Town Hall and adding one double-sided charger um in the parking lot at the Welcome Center. And Rick met with their electrician yesterday and we should have a q- a quote in the next few weeks, so there's um ever-source grant funding. There's um some pass-through funding from federal to the state. We do know that there's um with this designation for the charging corridor, that there's gonna be some federal highway money that hasn't come through yet. But we'll um, you know, keep an eye on that, but we'll come back with what these costs are going to look like. Um, and they did have a what I thought was a successful um, that green init- green energy initiative um summit of sorts. Um, last Saturday that Wendy Murphy put together, so I think she and I are gonna be getting together to talk about um town level where we can head um from a, a green energy perspective. Salary review, you saw the email that Jen sent, um, she wasn't available tonight, so we'll um keep this on for the next meeting to um talk about the assessor. Um, just starting off alphabetically, um. Excuse me, losing my voice, the S I T petition.
Excuse me, can I ask a question about the salary review?
Sure.
Um, alphabetically, what's my title?
Hmm. I apologize. You're absolutely right. So we can start with with Joyce.
And this is one of those items that I was referring to
Hmm.
Uh, when you guys were me doing your meeting schedule, just for point of reference, this item has been on the schedule, on the agenda since April seventh. That's a total of ten agendas.
Hmm.
Just food for thought.
Yep. So we received a letter, we were C C'd rather, on a letter from the Office of Federal Acknowledgement, which is the federal office that takes in the B I A applications. Um, and the letter was to Alan Russell as the representative for the S I T granting his request for an extension. There's a ninety-day response period for the petitioner to respond to any third-party comments. And um, the O F A granted that extension um to November first. What this means, I have no idea, um. In a brief email from Jeff, they were him and the other folks that are sort of working on this, were trying to get some more information. Um, but again, this is gonna be a long, long process and um, our comments still are not even up on the O F A, the B I A website. Um, I don't see any comments on the, the B I A website, so we continue to wait, but I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Uh, the streets eight point eight. Uh, the streets eight point eight, the streetscape construction. Update, as everybody knows, phase one is continuing on that last big portion, um, on the northbound side of North Main Street. Um. Mather has been really great about. Really talking with and contacting each property owner as they're getting ready to, you know, come across their, um. Their entryways to work with them as far as access, they've got the signs out there, um. They have sort of upped their protection of the different areas with the snow fencing and just in putting, have been putting a lot more stuff out there. Um, we still see people regularly walking through wet concrete. Picking up the yellow tape as they're pouring the concrete, a few. Sections down the street, um, picking up the tape and walking right through. Very wet concrete, so, um, we keep putting the messaging, including in the messaging to. Just be aware of where the places are that you're not supposed to walk, um. So that does cause them to have to re-broom it if it's still wet, um. Refinish it if it's, um, cured, but they're working through those, so, um. Similar to the small additional piece that the fife and drum, um. Offered to, to pay for and was completed. Um, we've been in contact with the owner of the villager and Kent Wine and Spirit. And they have offered to pay for some additional concrete from that DOT right-of-way to the front of their building. Um, at twenty-eight North Main Street, so that's the villager, so where the concrete sidewalk ends, um. The, there's, you know, a part of their patio out front, um. Is their property, so they have, um, made an offer to pay for since the concrete. Is the concrete truck crum- comes and they're pouring concrete anyway. They have offered to pay for that to be extended, um, which does give a, you know, a much cleaner appearance. Um, and is ultimately better for everybody because then concrete trucks wouldn't be coming in after the fact on the sidewalks, et cetera. So, um. They've offered for there and in the plan, um. Give me one second and I'll put this on screen share quick. Um. Always forget to hit that share button. So can everybody see, you have a sketch in front of you?
Yep.
So this is, um, towards the bottom is North Main Street, the sort of cloudy bubble on the left. Is that, um. Uh, the, the patio that's basically between the, um. What was in the plan and the front step of the villager and then the two little, um. These two small clouds. Um. The one on the left was going to be, um. In the plan, it was calling for, I believe, asphalt, but they've asked for the, the left one to, and the right one, both to be. Concrete, which they will also pay for, you can see the detail of the square footage that the engineers. Um, measured and the per square foot, which is the contracted price, which you'll see the total. And so they have agreed to pay this, um. Out of their costs, obviously it's not gonna come out of the town's cost, so that's the detail, um. That we're talking about. So we, we made a motion at the last, maybe it was two meetings ago, um. That the board recognizes the verbal offer by the Fife. And I think it's probably, um, good idea that we make a similar motion for these two, um. These two areas. And if you like, I have that written down, we can make that, I can make that motion. Um.
Go ahead.
Make the motion that the board recognizes the verbal offer by the property owner of twenty-seven and twenty-eight North Main Street. Regarding pouring of additional concrete solely at the owner's expense.
That was twenty-four, twenty-eight.
Um. Oh my gosh, yes, I'm sorry, twenty-four and twenty-eight, sorry about that.
Oh, I second see him minted.
I'll, I'll resend and remake that motion with twenty-four and twenty-eight. Apologies for the typo.
So. Second.
Thank you. Um, they're in the process of, um, pouring that concrete and, um. Well, let's get through this motion, I'll update you on the rest. All those in favor? I, thank you. Um, so they are, um, almost done with the rest of the curb installation. There are a couple of little spots where we're waiting on the last truck, um, we need to have a couple of radius curve that's. Due, I think, tomorrow, but, um, by and large, they're going to be, um, wrapping up in the next. Uh, two weeks, we have been. Pushing them every Thursday, the first thing I say when I sit down is pumpkin run. When, cause we talk about, that's the first thing we talk about, um, they. Recognize that, um, that's when we would like them to be wrapped up, they're gonna be largely wrapped up by the pumpkin run, we did talk about in more detail. Um, with Rick on hand to. Really talk about what the runners, um. What that pathway need, really should be optimally for the runners coming through, um, at the pumpkin run. The volume of runners that come through on the pumpkin run, so they are, um, they do very clearly understand from us. That we would like them to be largely wrapped up, um, by then, I'm confident that the concrete will be, um. Will be wrapped up by then, they will have. You know, a number of other places where they're, you know, doing that, that last work, which may go another week, week and a half. Um, but they're gonna be largely wrapped up by them. Um. Phase two, I figured it would be, um, a good idea to start sort of talking about phase two, very, very early stages. Um, SLR is working on the schematic design, setting up drawings based on the new survey and. Um, just a shout out to HAWK surveyors for getting that survey, it was a lot of surveying that needed to be done, so thanks to them. Their, um, SLR is also scheduling geotechnical borings and wetland flagging. A little bit above my pay grade, but that was the report back from SLR. And again, so this is another project that goes through a lot of DOT review, so. This is sort of the neonatal phase of phase two.
So Jean, just to, uh, just to ask, I mean, inspectors, whether it's SLR or Connecticut DOT, um, you know, they're still inspecting, obviously. Uh, the project in terms of, uh, compaction rates and all of that. Uh, no like, no irregularities, we're still, uh, we're still doing pretty well with, with all that.
So they had, um. And they just reported it this afternoon, they had one nu- so they do some sort of nuclear testing of the concrete. There was one, there were two tests, one was within a reasonable, um. I forget what it is, um, range. For the nuclear testing, one was outside of that, so they are looking into what is gonna have to be done there. Um. And again, it was just literally at our one o'clock meeting this afternoon that we, um, got notice of that.
Okay.
Um, there is, and I. Apologize, I need to find. Um, we did get notice of a second change order, um. Give me one second and I will find it. Um. That we should have a conversation on and take a vote on. So. So the, um. Make this a little bit bigger. So this is for, um. Uh, penetrating salt protection, so this was missed. In the. In the RFP, so it was not, but it was not missed by Mather, it was missed by SLR. And the, um, the cost, as you can see here. Um, let me see if I can make a note. Oh wait, here we go. Right there. So this a thirty thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollar change order, I am. Going to ask them for, um, a credit. But it's gonna be at the SLR end because this was their miss, not Mather's, um. But we do need this, it's the, sort of the, um, sealant that's going to protect the sidewalks. From salt and, um. Uh, you know, materials that come off of the road at Route seven when that gets plowed. And it's gonna extend the longevity of the sidewalks. So it's. It's in the hopper, but we do need to just. Um. Formally, you know, accept the change order, cause that's what we've been doing going along. So I'll make a motion to approve change order number two for the streetscape phase one. Project in the amount of thirty thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars.
I'll second it just to get to discussion.
Yep.
So. This is whose mistake?
So this would, it was missed at the. Um. The RFP. The bid document end, from what I, that's my understanding, sorry, my.
SLA's mistake. It was not included, Mather accepted it without that.
Correct, cause they. They went from the bid documents.
So. Are you simply gonna ask for a reduction of the SLR, or are we gonna say we are reducing? I mean, that's their mistake.
Yeah, I mean. It's an, it's a negotiation point, but. They'll hear loud and clear from us that we want a credit. That we don't expect to pay for this.
Did we just find out about this? Six days ago?
Yeah, whenever the.
Yeah, ten fourteen.
I have no experience in this kind of.
Right, so. Do we, do we want this sort of thing to happen? Um, absolutely not. Do things, do things like this happen? Yeah, it's. There's no, I mean, we can't. Turn back the clock, we can't, um, you know, what, the options for us are to. For me to, to. Take my signature off this, I've signed it already because in order to keep the, the project moving forward, we need to. They need to plan for and purchase this. This product, so, um.
Yeah, you wanna do it.
Right, I can either say, I, you know. The board changed their mind, which is, I don't think that, that's at all what we could do, um. What, what I think we should do is. Is really beat them up and, and tell them that we are expecting a credit on this.
I mean, we, we're gonna say we're expecting a credit, but. Are there any guarantees?
No.
No. Have you approached the streetscape committee with this?
No.
Should we? I mean, wanna keep going too, I mean, I, I know we wanna keep it going, but, uh, you know.
Yeah.
This is, I, I mean, yeah, th- this is, this is coming at me like, you know. Uh, tonight, I, I mean, n- not in the Google Drive, um. I would have loved to have actually like, I don't know, considered this, um, just seems. Kind of important, thirty thousand dollars, kind of rushed at the same time.
The funding is, is there.
Is there.
Yep. Absolutely. We are at the very, you know, we're at ninety per, you know, we're at the end of the project, um. The project needed to keep moving forward, I, you know, I couldn't hold up. The project for. For this, I mean, they, they, the project needs to keep moving forward. And there's a bunch of things at play, you know, obviously completion of the project is one thing, um. We have, they have a hundred and eighty days to complete the project in the contract. We have an encroachment permit for which we have, um. Uh, insurance that we get from Kerma, and if we extend that out, it's gonna, we're gonna pay more in. A premium to extend that, um, the weather is also getting to be not in our favor, so if we get to a point where they can't actually. Put this material down because we are now.
Jean, what is the hundred and eightieth day?
I'm sorry?
What is the hundred and eightieth day?
Uh, from August first.
Oh, okay, so. We're not near it. And that includes.
Five, six, so it's February-ish.
That will also include. The redos, they have to fix.
Yeah.
Everything that they have said they will fix.
Yep. And so once we're. You know, at the. Starting to get to the true wrap-up, we create what's called a punch list, I'm sure we all know what a punch list is, and the engineers. It would probably be in a Thursday construction meeting, we walk through the entire area and. The engineers, Mike Doherty, Rick, myself, Mike Diaz, we go through the project with a fine-tooth comb and. We. Create a punch list and that's, that's what takes us to the end of the project.
So this project began in July and they just discovered.
First.
August first, and they just discovered this six days ago?
Well, uh, was it exactly six days ago? So what happens is they, they. The contractor is moving through the project, they are not necessarily purchasing the stuff that they need at the very end of the project. They're not purchasing that at the beginning of the project, so we're now at the point where they, where SLR said, hmm. We, this was a mess, and so they came with this change order so that now that they, now they can order this. Product to put it down on the sidewalks to do the final. The final piece to the, the sidewalks.
And have you asked SLR to, to pay for this already?
No, I'm gonna have a conversation with Mike Doherty tomorrow. We had a long meeting today and there was a lot going on with the villager and the wine, wine and, um. Spirit shop, we wanted, it was a long meeting, long walkthrough, and I needed to come back and prep for this.
I don't wanna, I do not wanna hold it up. So.
Yeah.
But.
I don't either, but I would, I would love to get assurances that this is on them. Before we go for this, but it seems like we can't. Before we vote for this, but it seems like we can't.
No, we really can't wait.
Yeah.
I mean, they're trying to wrap things up and.
And just keep moving forward and. Get. Get this project, they're worried, they're worried about the weather, and I don't blame them, it's all of a sudden gotten really, really cold, really, really quickly. Um and that. You know, it starts to affect whether or not they can lay concrete, whether or not they can. Lay asphalt. It's. There's a couple of comments from Ed in the chat.
I don't understand why they didn't know this. Earlier, but uh.
Well, I will get more information tomorrow.
Yeah, and I would, I would really try to get them to pay for this, really try, I, I mean, this is crazy, you know, actually, so um. You know, we need to know this.
So this is, this is the same material they've been putting on, or is this something?
No, this is a, um. It's like the uh. Salt, it protects it from the salt. Because that's the material we use in Connecticut on surfaces. To melt the snow.
So where do they do painted on, or what are they?
No, it says right there. Application shall be.
I don't see it anymore.
Sorry, application shall be per manufacturer's. Preferred method and instructions, low pressure, pump type spray equipment, one saturating coat, broom out all puddles. Wipe up, wipe all excess materials, protect from traffic for twenty four hours. Which is manufacturer.
So this is applied when. When the sidewalks are dry, when it, when the concrete's dry.
Yep. I'm sure there's, they must have to wait a certain amount of time after the concrete is poured so that it cures, I don't know what that is, I don't. You have to read the side of the jar. So that's one point, a little over one point six percent of that total contract.
The funding is there currently, and you are going to ask SLR to pay for this.
Yep.
Because it's their mistake.
Yep.
Not ours.
Yep.
Not the town of Kent.
Yep. Voting on that. Motion that I just lost track of. Was to approve the change order number two for the amount of three, thirty thousand four hundred and sixty one dollars. Four hundred and sixty, yes. All those in favor? I. All those opposed? Thank you. So I will um. Contact them. I'm sorry, did you all vote in favor? I didn't. No, um Rufus and myself were in favor. Glenn was against. Okay, thank you, thanks. Um Town Hall Meeting Room Video Conference System Update. Um. Joyce, you wanna jump in?
Uh so at this point. Uh I, I believe Board of Finance actually utilized some of the equipment last night, um the TVs up, the cameras up. Uh we're still waiting for the installation of the actual microphones, as I had mentioned at the last meeting. They, they're not wireless, but uh we're having them mounted up onto the beams so that. Everything is um permanent and it doesn't get moved and, and damaged. Uh so unfortunately, we have to have the electrician come back uh to do some wiring, and we have to order one more speaker. Uh but we did today install blinds, the room is painted as I mentioned, um hopefully it will be ready very soon.
Yeah, so I um subbed in for um the Board of Finance clerk last night at their meeting and so I, I was. Preparing to plug in an old fashioned projector um to a laptop to just put the zoom up on the wall. And I realized that the. TVs were plugged in and so I turned one on and I was, I thought, oh, look, it looks like I can connect to the internet, so I ended up connecting to the internet with. With great ease, um and so we ran the Zoom meeting via the internet, um. And it. Was very, very smooth, very simple. So um that was good news. No, no catastrophic, so it was a, it was a good um guinea pig test for it, we had a backup boat, but it was good that it worked. Uh transfer of ownership of Veterans Memorial, so I got a letter, it's a very simple, just sort of legalese notice that um. Randy wrote up. That basically just says, um. Where it is, is it a transfer of custody and control, and I'll send this off to Andy, he actually has to send it back to us. Please accept this as the formal transfer of responsibility for the upkeep, care, maintenance, custody and control of the Veterans Memorial effective immediately. The funds on deposit with the town of Kent should remain with the town to be expended, expended for the upkeep and updating of the memorial. Accordingly, the Veterans Memorial Committee will no longer exercise jurisdiction or control of the memorial grounds or emplacements. So that we put in that, in place that new committee, that's a um. Board of Selectmen ad hoc subcommittee, but this one that was part of the Historical Society, um he's just transferring that. Um custody and control, so I'll send this off to Andy for him to sign, to send back to us, we're still waiting on the um. The. Not estimate, but the valuing of the three memorials and then we'll um. Get those on a policy with Karma, but this is part of that process. And um this will also enable Andy to cut us that check. For what remains in their bank account, and then it will get deposited into town. Um general fund and Barbara already knows that it will be coming and that funding will get um earmarked for um for the. Care and maintenance of the memorials. The stones at the Veterans Memorial. Um BOS Subcommittee Reports. Main Street Noise and Traffic Committee. Glenn, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Yeah, we, we didn't meet since the last time we've met, um and um and just my recollection from the last time we met about the last report that. That the Subcommittee sensed that it needed perhaps some tweaking uh a little bit, um that uh the Resident Trooper contract is. A two year, not a three year contract, that was one of them, so, so we, we haven't met to, to, you know, to edit that report. Uh but that's uh, that's still what we would like to do, should I go back to them and say, let's edit this and then bring it back, cause we didn't. We didn't, we certainly didn't vote on that, on that um, on that report, I think, um to my record.
Looking at. Just for housekeeping, if you wanna go back to them.
Okay, yeah, and, and then as part of that, thanks, Gene, for so, you, you sent that crime statistics link, I think you did send us some stuff that night, so.
Sorry. There's a lot of links.
There was a lot of links.
I had all those tabs open from over the course of a couple of days, so I figured I might as well just put them all in one email.
No, that was great, so uh, so I would like to share those with the committees, so, so when we meet, so I, I'll, I'll encourage them to meet and then we'll uh, and then we'll come back. Um and um and then related to that, uh um uh the uh, the pylons uh and the Connecticut DOT, have you heard anything else about any, anything from Connecticut DOT and?
So, yeah, Rick has submitted the um encroachment permit for them. I know that he got a bunch back. Last, in the last couple of weeks, but we really, we can't put them out until there's more. There's fewer of the other barrels on North Main Street.
But, but we are moving on that, that's great, that's, that though, I, I could go back to them and, and tell them that, and uh. And then Connecticut DOT with the, with the uh miles per hour signs, there, we're still waiting, so.
Yeah.
Right.
I'll.
Keep on them, please, thank you.
Send another nudge to one of the units up there.
Nudge your way, nudge your way.
Alrighty. And Selectmen's Reports, I just have a couple of things, but if somebody else, if y'all wanna go first.
Can I ask a question, actually, um ARPA funding update, uh we haven't talked about ARPA in a while, um is there anything to report with that, are we. Are we nearly completion with that, or what, what's up?
Yeah, um Barbara has been um. Giving out a lot of checks and it's really heartwarming when. Folks are coming in for their checks, they're so, so grateful, um it's, yeah, it's. It's kind of an amazing um experience, honestly, and so that's. I don't know where she is, but I know that she is. You know, marching through and, and making her way through, um it is the second page of her report. Oh, it is.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry.
Thanks. Sorry about that.
My bad. Oh, it is, thank you. Well, that's great, thank you, Joyce.
Rufus, anything?
Um, no, but. In terms of. What we need to talk about as far as salary updates.
So this is where.
Uh of things.
Yeah, we are under Selectmen's Reports, just from a. Staying on task.
Well, I'll either say it now or in public comment.
Okay.
Go ahead.
This can be your report.
I'm just saying that we have um not gotten. A lot of information, nor have we talked about how we're going to. Uh look at things, I think it's important that we. Look at um. Local, local, the local area, other towns where we're at, um we should have fast and figures. In um. Terms of. The town's. General ability, you know, what, what uh, how we are um in terms of um. Income levels and things like that for the taxpayers that are gonna be funding anything, um. But. You know, those are discussions that we need to have. Even before we go one on one, and going one on one through different things is, is gonna be. Part of it, but you know, we, we need to be talking about. Where.
Bigger picture.
Where we are, you know, I mean, if uh are we, y- y- we, we wanna try to compare apples to apples in, in the. Area, you know, otherwise uh. We could, we could have folks leaving for other positions in other town, towns that um. Are compensating in a, in better way. Um so that's all, and you know, we, we need some. Research. That has to be done in order to. Prepare, um. And I don't think that um. The cog survey necessarily is, they're just giving us. What the towns pay people, uh but that's not necessarily apples to apples. Um so I'm just, I'm concerned that we are, are not giving ourselves enough time to. Make uh. An uninformed decision. That's all.
And then if I could just add to Joyce's point, this um, this item has been on the agenda since what, April? Um and we, we may, you know, we may need a special meeting to just talk about salary, um because, I mean, we're, you know, we're two and a half hours now and. I have a feeling that's gonna be a long discussion, um so, so just to consider. You know, I mean, we can do it one after the other, if, but you know, if we have the information like Rufus says, maybe we can knock it out pretty quickly in a regular meeting. Uh but um. But just.
What sort of um other information would you? Would we like to have?
Well. I, I mean. You know, we want, we wanna be looking at, I mean, I, I just, the, for example, when Jen came last year with the assessor, she was comparing. What Kent paid to another town. Who had. Basically the same. We, number of. Assessments that had to be dealt with. You know. That. Means that those two jobs. Have to, have to. Cover the same amount of work. That made sense to me. You know, um. But we're, you know, there're gonna be some differences, you know, department by department, but you know, uh. There are, you know, are, are we looking at ranges, are we looking at? Different things, how are we determining Kent's ability to pay its employees? What it's the, what's the overall criteria that we would be using, are we? Looking at our grand list, are we looking at? You know, how, how are we determining? That, so you know, there's salaries and comparable salaries, and then where, where does Kent stand in the region in terms of its ability to pay? Versus. Other towns. So it, it's a. It's kind of. A complex.
Yeah.
Um.
Yes.
And it.
Thing that we're gonna be looking at.
Right. And because the. There's so many variables, I think we still have to come up with. What's our, what's our criteria?
Right.
And I would think that the first one is. Attracting and retaining talent, right? That's, that's an overarching one, right, we wanna. Attract and, and keep.
Right.
Good people.
I think that's important, but you know, um. We need to. We need to. Have that conversation now sooner than later because we're already looking at heading into November.
Yeah.
And we need to. Be ready. December to start. Putting together next year's. Budget.
Yep.
So, um. And so there, there. You know, I'm asking, please. Get, get us. As much information as you can. You know, and, and uh. But I, I just don't think that. Cog is necessarily. Gives us all the information, you know, maybe it's a series of phone calls to different towns, or if you want us to divvy up the work or whatever, but. You know. I, I think we need to have. Data. And it's. You know, it's Litchfield County towns, it's, a- and maybe some that are. Even slightly far afield, but um. You know.
So Litchfield County towns would be. By and large, the cog. And we can. I can take a look at um. Maybe we pick. Three other towns and I can base it on grand list, population. Rural um, you know, pick. Sort of um. Criteria that that is same. Right? We're not gonna.
Right.
Not gonna look at Hartford. We're not gonna look at Westport.
No, those are not, you know, the the apples to apples, but you know, in our.
On that.
Mill rate.
Some criteria, right? Mill rate.
We should have all of those things and then we can look at it and say, hey, you know, we're. We're way out of line here compared to other towns. Why is that? We have to have to have some answers to the why is that? Before we can move forward. And then look at the individual um departments. And whatnot, but at least that gives us a framework. A data framework to to work with.
Yeah.
So.
Alrighty. Um, just a couple of things. We had a cog meeting this morning. Um, there's a new D O T rural. Um, big, big buckets of money over, I believe, three years. It's called trip. Um. So, and that's. Early stages. They're still working out all the details, but that may help us with um. Whether it's moving some capital projects, moving. Um, because there's criteria, obviously, there's always criteria with grants. Um, but as we look to get more grant funding, um. There's. There's everything that comes with with getting more grant funding and. By not doing anything, the workload goes up, right? But the number of people doing that work has isn't changing, so that's. We may run into a tipping point where we can't apply for grants because. We don't have the resources, the human resources to apply for, manage, track. Um, and do all the. All the stuff that you have to do to get this grant money, but. It's, you know, we need to be going after these dollars, really. So that was one thing they talked about. Um, we had a. Presentation from D O T. There are a number of um Demis trainings coming up that are open for. Boards and um CEOs, mostly board selectmen CEOs. Um, one is on cybersecurity. There's one on crisis leadership. I think the scenario is for hurricane, so um. I'm registered for those. I'll send those out to you all. Um. I think it would be good to to possibly go to them. Um, C C M Conference is also coming up in a couple of weeks. They uh C C M has arranged for a special um. Gubernatorial debate. That is specifically for the municipal CEOs that are going to be coming to C C M. So that's our opportunity to ask um questions that. Of these candidates for our communities. So something to think about if you want to come up with a question or two. Um. I'd be happy to to ask those questions during the debate of those candidates. The, so we know that um New Vance has. Applied to the Office of Health Strategy to discontinue their labor and delivery. Labor and delivery and ICU services. That hearing was scheduled for this past Tuesday, but I think it was. Either, uh, no, it was Monday, actually. They postponed that hearing. Um, apparently in part due to the volume of testimony that they've received. And if you go on the um C O N portal. There are. Over a hundred um. Um, pieces of written testimony um. Talking about this, these services that they're trying to discontinue. Um, I was asked to submit. Testimony. A bunch of the other CEOs were asked to submit testimony. We submitted that. Um. And I encourage anybody to, you know, this is sort of a. Um, stay, if you will, so people have more time to to submit testimony on whichever. Whatever they think is, you know, should happen, but. It's a great opportunity to have our voice heard for primary care, for maternity care, you know, maternity is that front door. Of the hospital system. That's, you know, we all have kids and we all know. You know. You you have your babies at the hospital and then you have your pediatrician and there's that, you know. That care that's important in these community hospitals. Um, and it it makes me really nervous that if they discontinue these services, it's just the start of the march towards them. Walking away from this hospital really makes me very nervous. And then not only for the care, the primary care, the hospital care, emergency department care, but all those. People who are employed by that hospital, that hospital is a huge employer in the Northwest Corner. So that's, you know, the ripple effects on that are huge. People move to this area for a good small community hospital, good. Um, level of, you know, family care. Um. We have a drug takeback day coming up. It's a big national drug takeback day on October twenty ninth. Um, we had a meeting with the Northwest Corner Prevention Network yesterday. Um, they'll be on hand with Andrew to do. Um, they will be taking and. Um, Andrew will be taking for safe disposal any medications that people want to drop off. And we're planning to host a naloxone training for the public on the same, that same day. Um. So um more to come on that in the next couple of days. And I was. Looking for something in our file cabinets and discovered that we used to be. Members of the A D A Coalition of Connecticut. So after a little bit of research, um. It really looks like it's a great resource for um, that's a hundred and ten dollars to join, so we rejoined. Um, they provide training for towns and businesses. On all the different provisions of the A D A. They provide technical assistance. They have a bunch of toolkits that they make available. That's also where that A D A Coordinator Training. Is um, so I'll be looking more into that now that we've rejoined and um. Get back to folks on, maybe we can offer some training for board members, you know, staff members in the building. Um. So I think it it's, looks like a good resource. That's very focused on um. Providing information that's easy to understand versus the. A D A, you know, title that you read, that's like three hundred pages or something like that. So that, I think, is everything for me for the moment. Um, we have another. Public comment. Time. Lynn, I see your hand.
Thanks. Um, couple of things, um. Did I hear you say that the meeting audio was was used in the in the renov- the renovated uh meeting room last night? Because I was on the. Board of Finance meeting and it was really hard to hear and I was using headphones and everything.
So I, again, it's not um. Camera ready. It's not, we're not at the. It was just a, hey, this works. Let's see if we can, you know, pinch it and and make this work. Um, but that's good to know. I know that Joyce had them.
This, the speakers are not connected.
So that may have been.
Are the.
I mean, I mean, the microphones, I'm sorry, the microphones are not connected at this point. They still need to be hardwired.
There was a lot of echo. It's very hard to make out.
I believe it was, I believe it was the laptop is what was recording the audio. Over recording the audio. Mm hmm. Yeah, we did that test in the beginning when we asked every, you know, the people out in Zoom land if they could hear and. It sounded like. There was a thumbs up, so we continued forward with that. So I apologize if it was not as. Great quality as we thought it would be.
Um, my second thing was, I was wondering if the three of you have actually read through the previous salary review document. Um. Uh, because you are, you are talking about a lot of the same information that was discussed. In two thousand and eighteen.
Mm hmm.
Um, a lot of that information was gathered, I believe. All of the department heads, and I know there's been changes in the department heads. But they were all met, they all met with the Board of Selectmen. So you guys should definitely review that information. Um, I think I might have said this before, but um. I I just, it it pains me to watch you guys go through what the other board went through. If you haven't actually read what they did.
Yeah, I I have um read through it. Yeah, I I have, I, there's a lot that's changed since two thousand and eighteen. Um.
I know that.
But I do agree with you that it it's a good um. Groundwork for us to. To at least start from.
Was this document from, I'm sorry, October two thousand and eighteen? Yep, I've got it right here. Yep.
Um, was there corresponding information? Like, I know they they tried to do a lot of stuff in executive session. So I'm not sure how much was actually um. Collected. Um, but. It would be sad to me if you guys didn't have those records of the, other than just the report. The selectman actually did a lot of work. Um. Even after they received that report. They didn't end up. I mean, they did make some changes to salaries, but. Um, there was an awful lot of other information that was gathered. So I hope you guys have access to that as well.
I'll have to, Joyce, we'll have to go through the files and. See what was saved and um. I didn't get the sense I went through them, some of the minutes from those, from that sort of timeframe. Um. And it was um. You know, sort of hit or miss. But Joyce and I can. Sort of blow the dust off those files and see what we have and get stuff scanned in and shared.
I I I would hope that Joyce would have a better handle on that because, I mean, she was right in the middle of all that stuff, so.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, and the document, the and the document I have in front of me is uh it's more about job descriptions than salary, actually, so uh. I just looked through it again and there's not a whole lot of salary in here. But. That'd be helpful.
The consultant was really into equity. He was really focused on equity uh within. The different uh positions within town. Thanks for the work that you guys are doing with it, though. I think it's important.
Thank you.
Do I see any other hands up? Just scanning. The virtual room. I don't think I see any hands up. So it is according to Apple, I believe it's nine fifteen. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you. I'll second that.
I just can one thing, Glenn, if you go back to the. Um, October second, two thousand and eighteen. Board of Selectmen Special Meeting. There's uh. They met in the the management, Town of Kent Management Review Study. Includes that that is much more manageable and um. There's information there actually gives. Figures and things like that, that that was part of the special meeting.
Okay, October second, two thousand and eighteen.
October second, special meeting, two thousand and eighteen.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Alrighty.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah.
And we are at nine sixteen. All those in favor of adjourning.
Bye.
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks, everybody. Stay warm.
Goodnight.